Is there a red silver?
There's a glare, I can't see the colors.
The first one on the left?
Okay, Mr. Chin.
On the left.
Okay, Mr. Chin.
Good evening, welcome to the Selectments Meeting of December 4th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Four Selectmen President, Town Administrator are also, is also here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Tim, you can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, there's a seal. Still in the car. Okay. Announcements, anything, Mary?
We have nothing.
Peter.
Yes, I'd just like to thank everybody who participated in the Christmas Parade. Thanks to the Wareham Village Association, thanks to the Wareham Police Department for keeping the parade safe, and thanks to all the participants who marched. We had a lot of fun, the four of us, in the parade, throwing candy to children and sometimes at each other. And it was a great day.
I just want to say I had a good time. It was a lot of fun out there, throwing candy at the kids. Although, next year, we're gonna have to put on a few more. We seem to run out, or get close, at least at the very end there, we always seem to run out. We throw, we get a little heavy-handed in the beginning. It was 55 pounds of candy we threw. So, you know, that's a lot that we had, so. So hopefully, we will do better next year.
You throw it to the children, not at them, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, and actually, and actually, you know, we try to give, I try to give a little lollipop or something to the adults, too, you know, so they, you know, this, yeah, so they have a little something, you know.
Was that little girl, you want some candy?
Huh? You are bad. All right, so that's, other than that, we have nothing for announcements here today.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, it's, everything is fine. I'm all set. Quiet night.
Board comments?
Mary, any comments from any events, or any committees running?
No, sir.
Peter?
Nope.
Just one. Thursday night is the school department's budget hearing. You know, once again, it seems like the same thing happens every year. It's even the same number, $2 million. That's, they always want the $2 million increase. We go in there, we tell them what we only have X amount to split between all the departments. At this point, I think it's probably time for this board and the Town Administrator to sit down with the school department and the school committee and negotiate some kind of revenue-sharing agreement so that we don't have to deal with this every single year.
You know what, I'll wait until we get to liaison reports.
Okay. Basically, there's a bunch of things going on, but they're just percolating along. Again, I just want to ask everybody to enjoy the holiday season, Christmas, New Year's, whatever else is celebrated, Hanukkah, et cetera. Please be safe, stay well, and let's develop a little more respect, you know, for people in general, schoolteachers, you name it, everything. And let's have some decorum in life, because the way it's going right now, it's the wrong direction for this country. Thank you.
All right, citizens' comments. Anybody here? Did you see, there's a hand up some, no, I don't see any hands. Oh, wait, one in the back of the room. Come on down!
Hold on, we're gonna call it Sandy's comments.
We're gonna, yeah, that's right, we can change the name to Sandy's Comments. You don't have any trash with you, do you?
No.
Okay.
Well, but she has no cards, we're in trouble.
I have no cards. Sandy Slaven. I'm here to promote a fundraising event put on by the Toby Hospital Guild. It is called "Light a Light." And for $3, you can have a name placed on an ornament that will be placed on the tree at the main entrance to Toby Hospital. And at our Christmas dinner, we will read every single name that we have on our cards. It's a fundraiser for equipment for the emergency room. So, it's just $3 a name, dog, cat, parent, whatever, and we'll put an ornament up on that person, for that person. And just a little piece of history. It started in 1984. Ellen War and my mother Ruth Calanosi started this event. So this is a long-running fundraiser for the Toby Hospital Guild. Now, the other topic I really came to talk about, I'm very unhappy about the jug shop. This is, this is a business that sold to an underage person twice. And it's my understanding, because this board said if they were to withdraw their appeal, they wouldn't have to be shut at all. And I understand that their transfer of their liquor license is happening, but I don't think it's fair that they continue to be in business selling liquor and making profit until the transfer of the liquor license. I was very disappointed that the majority of this board ignored that violation and let them be open during the Christmas holidays.
Actually, we didn't allow them to be open, they filed an appeal.
Yeah, but you, you didn't wait for the appeal. You didn't wait for the appeal to be determined by the state. You just said, "If you withdraw your appeal, we'll let you stay open." So, I know you're not supposed to comment back on me, but I was extremely disappointed that you allowed them to continue to sell, because that, until the appeal was determined. And, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, appointments, reappointments, interviews?
None.
Just nothing.
Okay. Do you want to take yours completely out of turn?
Yeah, you want to take?
Yeah, if we could, Mr. Chairman, we have requested, after you and I spoke, have requested that the Wareham Police Department bring forward one of their, their projects, if you will. And tonight, we have Lieutenant Walter Correa, Lieutenant John Gerard, and the chief wants to be here, but there's a, there's a very important young lady that has a great event tonight, so. Gentlemen, if you'd like to step up, I promised to get you in here earlier.
This is under the Town Administrator's report, in case anybody has a question.
Somebody in the back of the room killed one of the bank of lights. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Walter W. Correa, Jr., of the Wareham Police Department, and on behalf of Chief John Walsec, Lieutenant John Gerard, and the men and women of the Wareham Police Department, we appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I will be talking about the town of Wareham's need to provide its citizens with more police officers to meet the public safety needs of this very busy community. In this presentation, we will be discussing the Wareham Police Department as a whole, Wareham's growth, the calls for service, and we will be comparing this to different towns that are similar in population and area. Finally, we will discuss the town moving forward. First, we're gonna take a look at the Wareham Police Department from 1990 to present, and you will be able to see how there's a need for more officers. This graph shows the population of the town. Since 1990, the town's population has grown by almost 15%. Below the population number, there is a number next to the year that shows the number of police officers employed full-time. Although the numbers have increased in population, the number of full-time officers has not risen along with the population. The reality is, the number of full-time officers has decreased. Now we transition into calls for service throughout the town. If you look at the graph, you can see an almost consistent number of calls for service for the town up until 2008. While crime statistics have dropped in town, the time-intensive social work calls have risen along with the residential and business population, and since 1990, the calls for service have doubled. Here are just a few of the calls we did in 2017. The Wareham Police responded to 234 overdoses, 171 mental health-related calls, and 1,310 domestic calls. These numbers are just a small portion of the call responses by the police department. Why did we break down the calls for service? We did this to help show where the demand for officers has increased. Since 1990, the police department's focus has changed and is now more focused on social work. The main goal for the police department is to improve the quality of life for everyone. The national average of officers per population should be 2.5 officers per 1,000 citizens. That would put Wareham at around 57 officers, instead of the 43 we currently have. As already discussed, the town of Wareham has been growing very rapidly in just the last few years. The maps below show the population in Wareham in 1990, and where most people were living then, and the population where the citizens of Wareham living in 2010. Just looking at this map, you can see how there's been an increase, and more people are starting to migrate into areas of our town, such as Onset, Buzzards Bay, and the Wareham North area of town. In recent years, there have been new additions to our town. To name just a few, Wareham North has added Walmart, Wareham Crossing, and Rosebrook Place. Wareham South has added the Marijuana Dispensary and many new streets, such as Corey Drive. Onset North added Union Pond, and Onset South is starting to become a more established part of our town, where some homes are turning into full-time residency. To show the need for offices in the town of Wareham, we looked at five different towns that had a comparable population and area. These towns are Bourne, Yarmouth, Sandwich, Dartmouth, and Falmouth. We will be comparing populations, area, number of offices, the calls for service for each department, and the budget for each department. By looking at the top graph, you will be able to see that our staffing size is very comparable to our next-door neighbor Bourne, with 45 offices and four patrol sectors for each shift. Every other comparable town has a much bigger staff. Now, if we look at the calls for service on the graph below, Wareham had over 57,000 calls for service in 2017. Bourne had 25,129, which doesn't equal to half the amount of calls we have. Yarmouth is the closest, at only 39,605 calls for service in the same year, with a staff of 61 officers. This is a look at the budgets of the comparable towns. As you can see, we have a very similar budget with Bourne and Sandwich, but have much more calls for service than both towns. Sandwich, who has eight less full-time offices at 35, also had less than half the calls for service, but has a comparable budget to Wareham. Next, we are going to break down our patrol sectors. Currently, Wareham has four patrol sectors with one officer assigned to each sector per eight-hour shift. As you can see, the Wareham North Sector, in green, is very large, and with the ongoing business and residential development, one officer is just not enough to cover this area. Looking at the future, this is the proposed sector map the police department is looking to use going forward. As you can see, we added a sector for Wareham Center, in red, to cut down the amount of area the Wareham North Sector Patrol currently has to cover. It also allows a patrol car to be in the center of town and help respond to any call in Wareham if needed. Our goal by the middle of next year is to have 11 new officers on duty to help keep our town safe and enhance the quality of life for the residents of Wareham. What would the additional officers do? Six of the 11 officers would be assigned to the new patrol sector for each of the three shifts. Five more officers will be used as a situational team, which will be run by the chief and will give assistance where help is needed. Wareham Police Department receives more calls regarding non-priority calls that affect the great majority of our citizens, but don't immediately rise to the level of a Priority 1, 2, or 3 response. These calls include noise complaints, speeding cars, loitering, suspected drug activity, found property, and vandalism, just to name a few. Currently, the volume of priority calls makes it impossible to respond to the majority of these complaints. The situational team will be used to impact these quality-of-life concerns by the vast majority of our citizens. Here is our reference list. Feel free to contact Chief John Walsec, Lieutenant John Gerard, or me regarding any questions about this presentation. You can reach us at (508) 295-1473, or from the Wareham Police website, check our email address and send there. Thanks again for your time and listening.
So, thank you very much for, for allowing the time. I know it's, we're going into the budget season and such. They had done this, they'd been working on this, they brought it forward tonight, basically as a favor to me, so I promise not too much diving deep until we have the chief out at the next meeting, if that's okay with everyone.
We look forward to the continued discussion. Thank you.
And just so you know, we do have discussion on possible spring town meeting warrant articles on here, which of necessity includes the budget as well. As well as any possible override considerations.
And you guys, you guys put this all together, so that was pretty impressive. Thank you very much.
It has been kind of a growing document, because I know one of the things that we submitted recently was 12 officers. We had a discussion with Superintendent of Schools and had a discussion regarding a 12th officer, just to put an additional officer to the schools.
Additional school resource officer, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Well, I remember when, we talked about this 20 years ago. You were short at least a sector, and you probably are short more than that in actuality. And we did a, we did a study at the time, cost us, I don't know, $15,000. Doesn't seem like much today, but it was a lot of money then. And at that point, you were understaffed by a considerable number. And, you know, this is, this should have happened along the way. Unfortunately, money has always been the issue.
Correct.
And, you know, it, somehow, it's gotta get prioritized, I think.
We have located a copy of that study, if you'd like to see it.
I've seen it, I, I remember it, I've read it a thousand times when we were, when we were going through stuff. And to be honest with you, I agreed with the study. I mean, it was pretty clear, it was done by an independent outside group. And, you know, and the funny part was, is that when we did the study, you guys were coming up for negotiations, and we still couldn't give you any money. And it said you were underpaid, understaffed. I mean, it was amazing what the report said, and there was still no money. And, you know, I'm, I'm sorry for that, but, you know, it has been the issue, and somehow, we've got to make it a priority and deal with it, no question about it.
Ultimately...
And we weren't even this size, we are now.
That's part of the issue. We've spent so much growth, especially with, you know, the Wareham North Sector. But ultimately, what we want to do, and this is what Chief Walsec was pushing, is we want to increase the public safety for the citizens of Wareham who deserve this. And this is what we're trying to get done. This is not padded.
We know that.
Absolutely not.
Well, we basically, and we'll cut it really short, is that we want to be proactive rather than reactive. A proactive police force makes it better for life for everybody in the town. Thank you.
And, you know, if the 40B ever gets through, there's a lot more services to be added, so.
Correct.
And just for clarification, in case people didn't see it or listening, just Wareham North, could you just quickly describe the sector, the new proposed one?
The new neighborhood. So, basically, right now, Wareham North has, from Atlantic Boats all the way down to the Rochester Line, and then they go down County Road to Blackmore Pond. Essentially, what we want to do is, by creating this new sector, they would come, that sector would cover from Charge Pond Road to Glen Shally Road, and then on the south side of 28. So now that we have a, basically, an officer in the middle, it would allow for him or her to be able to assist in all the calls. Because if you, one of the concepts that we discussed during the discussion was a two-town concept, basically, make an onset of town and Wareham a town, and having three op, typically, that, a town that size would have three to four officers just for like the onset end of our town. So by, we basically, the thinking was, we'd give half an officer to each town by creating a sector.
You know, if you think about it, if you take the growth in population since we discussed this, probably in 2000, by the way.
Correct, that's correct. 2001, I believe, is the time.
Okay, so I knew it was somewhere around there. When we discussed it, and you take the growth in population, and you look at the, the number of call increases, you know, we probably should have been two sectors up by now. In order to make it all work. And it's just, it really is, it really is difficult. And it's, it's, to me, it starts to get to the point where you get, your public safety isn't doing what it needs to do. And of course, then we've added the opioid crisis to you, which is also another issue. And a lot of times, you guys are there before anybody else.
Correct.
So you have to deal with it. And that's, that's also a big thing now, as you well know, so. And we appreciate the jobs you guys do, and don't worry, everybody does. But, you know, we have to do something to prioritize this, no question about it.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate you coming back.
Appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Okay, back to licenses and permits.
All right, first up is the application of Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill and Bar, 2885 Cranberry Highway, for change of manager.
Anybody here from Chili's? Come up, come up, please. Thank you. Come up and introduce yourself.
Just right here.
Absolutely.
Okay, my name is Ellen Cornell. I just took over as general manager two months ago.
Okay.
Questions for the board?
Nope. I have none.
No, I don't have any questions. Yep, this is all, once, once, if this, we approve this, it'll go, you have to be corried. Doesn't, I don't have a corried back yet, so it'll have to get corried, and then it'll,
It was about last week, so.
It'll officially get changed when the, when it gets all approved by the ABCC, too. All right, so I move we change the manager for Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill and Bar, 2885 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham. The manager will be Ellen Cornell. Ellen Cornell.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 400. Thank you.
We'll notify you when the ABCC has it backed down.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Have a good holiday season.
I hate to do this one next, I felt like he should sit there a little longer, because he, he visited us so much once upon a time, and now he hardly comes anymore.
Go ahead.
All right, so the next up is the application of Baypoint Club LLC, DBA Baypoint Club, 19 Baypoint Drive, for change of manager. Come on down. Come see us. All right, so, this is, are you Barbara Fay?
Barbara Fay.
Okay, so this is, they're requesting to change the manager.
So we have the real boss tonight, correct?
There we go.
I believe we have two of these, make sure we get the right address for each one.
Yeah, well, we're doing 19 first. All right? Yeah. This is the one that's in the folder first. That's what we're doing, 19. All right, does anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, I move we,
Change, and that's all.
I move we change the manager at Baypoint Country Club LLC, DBA Baypoint Club, 19 Baypoint Drive, Onset, Mass., to Barbara J. Fay. And the same thing will apply, obviously, that we told the other folks, you gotta, it goes out for corrie and approval by the ABCC.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 400.
All right. And the next one is Baypoint Club LLC, DBA Baypoint Club at 10 Baypoint. And this is, they have two, everybody knows that, right? There's the club where the, where the, the golf club, and then there's the, the pavilion, which is, okay. I just want everybody out there to know that there's two different licenses over there. All right, so, no questions, right? I move we change the manager at Baypoint Club LLC, DBA Baypoint Club at 10 Baypoint, 10 Baypoint Drive, Onset, Mass. The new manager will be Barbara J. Fay.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 400. Thank you.
All the same things apply.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now you get to wait for the ABCC.
Have a good night, people.
Thank you. All right, next up is Ping, let's see. Ping, Inc., DBA One Lung Chinese Restaurant, 172 Main Street, for Common Vic. Hello.
How are you tonight?
Good evening, everyone.
Aye.
Good evening. So you're buying the Chinese restaurant that's on Main Street, correct?
Yes.
All right. Any questions?
Anything at all you want to tell us about any changes you're gonna make or anything?
Not really, everything keeps the same. We make sure, have a great Chinese food.
Thank you.
That's what we like.
It's even better.
The same, but better, yeah.
All right, all right. So I move that we approve the Common Vic for Ping, Inc., DBA One Lung Chinese Restaurant, 172 Main Street, Wareham.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 400. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Help me get that tomorrow, the next day, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. One more.
All right.
That's it.
You see it. Next up is the application of Stone Path Malt LLC for a seasonal liquor license extension. And the extension goes through January 15th, if anybody's interested.
Second.
Nobody's here from Stone Path, any questions?
All right, I move we approve the liquor license extension for Stone Path Malt LLC, Mark St. Jean, 11 Kendrick Road, Wareham, Massachusetts.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the board?
I just want to make one observation, they've been, on Fridays, went to Suze Successive Events there, I guess, do you want to call it that, where they serve craft brews, and also had oysters. And the first one was probably, I guess, when I walked in, and by the time I left, there were about 60 people there. The second one, there had to be over 100 there. So they're definitely increasing in popularity there. I think they may eventually come back before us to seek an expansion of the serving premises, because it gets kind of crowded, which is a good thing.
They actually, just for the public's notification, they've been booking some events as well. People have been asking to use the facility for small events, so I expect to see more activity out of them.
All right, I'm gonna move up to the requests for Bourne.
Oh, yeah, we haven't voted on this yet, sorry. Spacey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, 400.
All right, next up, I'm gonna move to the requests for Bourne. Wareham Art Association to place signs on town property. The requested near Meeting House be just prior to the event. It says roadside intersection near Meeting House. And that's all, that's the only request, so.
That would be, I believe, the parking lot in front of the, the barrier in front of the Mill Pond Diner, in that curb area, on Elm Street and stuff.
Okay. I move we approve the request.
Second.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 400.
The next one up is CPC request from the Town Administrator.
You know, it's, I can do mine, after we've got somebody here waiting for a presentation, I can do my stuff after that.
All right, yeah, but he's not here yet, oh, yeah.
Mark's here.
Mark, okay, let's do Mark.
Let's do the Buzzards Bay Coalition.
Okay.
The pastor's supposed to be here at 7:30.
Update from the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Come on down, you're the next contestant.
How surprised, silly. Actually, you owe me a beer for getting you up there.
Actually, you owe me a beer for getting you on the road.
It's Slim Pickens. It's Pastor Shaw, no?
Yeah. This will just take five minutes. Five minutes of discussion. We've got a few things to say, but they'll be pithy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us back.
Good evening, Sam.
Mark Grasmussen, Sam Gray from Buzzards Bay Coalition, here to give an update. We were here midsummer for an update on the development of the onset Bay Center and the bathhouse, so we wanted to give an update tonight, talk about some recent developments and hopefully clear up some, some stories. So, I guess, I have a couple things, I want to hit what we've been doing out on Wicket's, people have been seeing a barge and a crane out there, I wanted to update everybody on that. Talk about our building that we just completed in Marion, which is linked to onset, and I haven't talked about that much with you, but it's part of our plan for development of this whole center. Development of the bathhouse, which is under construction as of last week, and talk about sort of the schedule looking ahead.
Okay.
That's what we've got to cover and it won't be, won't take very long. First off, on Marion, so, on the corner of Spring Street and Route 6 in Marion, we opened a new field operations facility that's gonna house all of our boats and mowers and science equipment for the whole region. The reason I mention it tonight is because it makes everything we're doing in onset possible, all of our sailboats, all of our kayaks, all of our stand-up paddleboards, everything that we'll be using in all the programming, all of our floats came out of onset bay, they all go into our yard and building at Marion now. So Marion becomes the support facility for storage and maintenance. Really neat building, we're really excited to have it done and open. All of our onset equipment's already over there, but that amount of equipment's just gonna grow in the years ahead, so our, our back infrastructure, I guess, for the onset bay idea is in place now in Marion. One good piece of news of that is we have hired the exact same contractor, the Valley Group, from Falmouth, is the ones who built the Marion facility. We have under contract now to build the onset bathhouse for us. They are gonna do the renovation. Valley Group has done wonderful job for us in Marion, they're a contractor at Mashpee Commons, they're doing a lot of the Red Brook development for AD Makepeace, really quality builder that we're excited to have here on the bathhouse project as well. But before I get to all the bathhouse stuff, just really quick it on, quick on Wicket's, because it was off-season, onset bay's been really quiet, but I'm sure a lot of folks saw the activity over there. We had two marine barges and at times a third delivering sand and loam, a crane setup. The challenge over there was to finally undo all the remnants of the old mansion that was up there. So underneath the vines and the growth, there was more than I think a lot of people realized still below ground and exposed, so foundations, the cistern systems, a lot of the old boathouse structures, we had to safely get all that stuff off island on really steep sandy slopes, so the solution became crane lifting material from a barge, so we weren't sort of affecting the island while we did that. So that is all done now, we filled in all the holes, it's been regraded up there, it's actually gonna be a beautiful gathering place at the top of the island now, there's an open field where the mansion used to be. So a lot of that work took almost a month out there, the barges just disappeared on Friday. All right, actually, the last one, I think, over the weekend, so we are, we are done. It was an interesting operation, sand and gravel coming out of New Bedford on a barge company over here to onset, the kind of lengths you go through to do, to get to these unique places. What, what people can expect to see now in the future, so we have a lot of grass to grow in and a lot of maintenance to do out there to spruce it up. The last piece will be the waterfront side, so we have the staircase that's falling down, you all know the staircase, we're installing a new metal staircase, a steel staircase on that slope, redoing the decking and the pointing on the pier and adding a new float, so it'll be safe to land a boat, come up a ramp, get onto the pier and get up to the island. So the waterfront stuff is about to go out to bid and we're looking forward to getting that done for the summer. So that's the activity at Wicket's. On the bathhouse, I guess the, the really great, the really great news to share about the bathhouse is, we are under construction, all permits in hand as of this fall. Like I said, we hired the Valley Group. It's a, it's a challenging construction, it is on a beach, it's winter now, we have a lot of steel and concrete work to do in the cold season, so they're gonna, they're gonna go gangbusters right now as far as they can till we get to the peak of the season. We have told them, they are clear that they are not gonna be under construction in the middle of July and August on onset beach, so there will be a stop work in the middle, so we're not managing a wrecking the summer beach season on onset beach, and then getting back to it in September. The good news about that is, it's great to be under construction, it's great to be going. It means another season, sort of operating out of temporary quarters, so the programming this season will not be full scale without the bathhouse done, as everybody can imagine, but we are, we're a go, that's the good news on that. The last piece, and it's received some press, we are past a citizen lawsuit that was filed against the project as of last week. I want to say a few things about that tonight. First off, thank the board for their partnership in settling the litigation. This was litigation brought against the town of Wareham, Buzzards Bay Coalition, the onset Bay Grove Association, the 100-year-old defunct corporation that built onset, and David War. So, that is behind us, that's really great news. From our perspective, I wanted to say a few things about the way that lawsuit was resolved. First off, to say that the lease area that you approved almost three years ago now is unchanged by the settlement. So I, I want to talk about it from the map a little bit, because I think there's been a bit of confusion as to what the lease area for this project actually is. So folks can, you can see from there, hopefully the color's not within distance. I'm just gonna point this out, you'll see. So, so even from where you are, hopefully, the, it's easier to see, what's, this is Bayview Park. Here's South Boulevard, Mark Anthony's right here, onset avenue, here's the entrance road into onset pier. So the pier's here, this is the sidewalk system inside the park, so the green areas are areas of Bayview Park that have nothing to do with our project whatsoever. Never did, never, never was, never will be part of the project. The area here, this black outline shows the perimeter of what is the lease that was granted by the town and confirmed by the governor for the bathhouse project. It extends pretty much, if you go up to the park today, you can see the perimeter chain link fencing that's up there today. The chain link fencing is roughly at the, at the limits of the lease right now, so everybody can see it on the ground. It is the backside of the sidewalk at the top of the bluff, down and along the bulkhead, the concrete bulkhead in front of the bathhouse. It does not include any sand, though no sand of onset beach was leased, leased to us for the project. What you can see here also on the plan is this gray outline is the footprint of the bathhouse reconstruction project. The orange areas are the new staircase, ADA ramp, the building will be ADA accessible at both floors, the ground level and the second floor, so dealing with that slope, you know, most of, most of the lease area that you granted to us is a pitch of about this slope, it's pretty unusable to us. And so the ADA ramp accomplishes access to the second story. So, this was the lease approved by town meeting, it is what we bid on for the project, and it remains unchanged through all of this discussion about our lease, this has never changed. That's, I wanted to get that picture up there. Also, the, the settlement of the litigation did not change the project ever, so we are building the bathhouse that we intended to build in the same way, in the same footprint that you all have seen a million times, that's how the project's going forward. Any questions about any of that? I guess the, the last thing I'd like to say is actually a note about David War, local citizen, was sort of brought into this litigation, I want to explain sort of where David War comes from in this. So, the lands and the beaches and the parks of onset are an interesting ownership story. You all know that they don't have clear title. David War is a descendant of the original developer. We asked David if he would consent to the lease so that nobody in the future would ever wonder whether or not we had right to that lease. David, as just a good citizen, said yes, and that's sort of the end of David's involvement.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I've got a few things to say.
Let me go down the line, we'll go through. Tony, anything at all? Mary?
No.
You're on.
Yeah, and that's absolutely the case, you know, this was truly a lawsuit to nowhere. None of the lease premises was changed, there was some minor change in the verbiage discussing, one was gonna be what, I guess, you know, the bathhouse area, then there's a development area, and then there's a maintenance area. All three of those new descriptions fall within the outline of what you see there, so, so nothing has changed. Regarding the ownership of the property, here's the problem, people think this is dedicated public land and it's not. There's an easement that was granted by the Supreme Judicial Court in 1916, allowing the public to use the lands that they designated in their decision of 1915. People really need to go back and read that decision of 1915, don't read the decree, that's like the entry of judgment in a case today. If you go into law books and read cases, you don't see what the entry of judgment was, you see what the actual decision of the court was, you don't see the piece of paper that somebody got, you know, two months later, after the appeals period ran out and said, you know, judgment entered in favor of blah, 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 blah. That, that's not where the court's reasoning is, you've got to look at the decision. I heard all kinds of crazy things, I heard that it was reported to the Attorney General's office that what the Board of Selectmen, and apparently the Coalition as well, actually sought to develop condominiums down there and that this was some backhanded way to give David War title there so he could be our agent in developing condominiums. I mean, I've never heard such crazy stuff in my life. There was no intention to develop condominiums, there was no intention to give some third-party control over land, which, you know, the town essentially acts as a trustee over, there was never any intention to build any more than what was leased there, which was our grant from town meeting and also the state legislature to go ahead and do. So, you know, once again, I'm not sure what the purpose of this lawsuit was other than to ruffle feathers and call attention to people.
So, I had heard in, when this whole thing all started, that somebody thought we were giving you 16,000 square feet of the beach, which, you know, was really just never in the picture, I hope everybody understands that. There's nothing to do with the beach, it's the original sort of footprint down there and that's what you have. And it's all we ever gave you, and we intentions, we would have never given beach to anybody, I mean, it's just the way it is. You know, the beach belongs to everybody. And we, we thought we were doing what was good for the town, always in this instance, that we are giving something to the citizens, something exactly what all these people should want, is we were giving them the use of the land in a program that all of the children get to participate in, that as far as I know, has been running now for what, like almost two seasons, and running very well and very well participated in. And they should all be appreciative of what, what we have accomplished down there. And going into the future, it's gonna be very bright, and lots of children are gonna have stuff that they never had before, and maybe it'll get them away from their video games and out into the sun and, you know, all those kinds of things, which I think is, could nothing be better than to get them out of the house. You know, and when I was a kid, my mother used to throw me out of the house, in fact, she used to say, "Get out of here, go someplace, come back later." You know, I, I don't know about your parents, but if you're old enough, that's what they used to do, go outside and play. You know, we don't, we don't want you in the house. My God, my mother would have a heart attack if she knew we were sitting in the house playing video games all the time. But this, this is a good thing for the people of, of onset, for the people of Wareham in general, and I don't see how this became anything but good for the town. And it's a shame that it had to have some, have, have a sort of a bad taste in some people's mouths as it was being developed. And we appreciate what you've done and we hope that, you know, you will handle it like, like champs, like you have, and of course, if you don't, we'll be on you anyway. And that this program will be exactly what we expected it to be and exactly what it's been for the last two years. Thank you.
Willby.
Yeah. Not worried about that. This particular project, I was probably the initial push, once Mark told me what they wanted to do, so obviously I've been a strong proponent, is a mild way to put it. I looked at the Boys and Girls Club, talked to them about the opportunity for children who would never have this opportunity, if this didn't come up, and to sit there and penalize those population bases would have been a horrible thing. When the discussion was actually, talked about settling this suit, I can tell you right now, my answer was no way in hell. I wanted blood, and I'm not gonna go back on my word at all. I thought it was wrong, I thought the reasons were wrong, and I really did not want to settle, but at the bottom, at the end of the day, my biggest concern was getting this project done, and I didn't want to delay it. So I basically stepped back from my personal feelings. It's, we had an opportunity, I believe, to once and for all settle this mess with the, with the decree, et cetera. I've asked our town council to look into this going forward, to get the settlement of what we do and don't do in that particular land, what we can and not do, to get this finalized, because I don't want to have this come before us again with any project, it just, it's a waste of time and energy. Thank you for your perseverance.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and I usually refrain from speaking on this, but it's, it's, it is shameful that, what, what happened was we lost a month of this project being fully resolved, and it was based off of lies, damn lies, if you will. And that's what's really shameful, and I think some people were misled, those citizens, by an entity, person, I don't know, to, because the lies coming out from, we were, we were leasing all the way up to the gazebo, to the ocean, building condos, it's just shameful. And I'm sorry that this, this happened, so. And you're right, it's, until I actually saw the settlement, it said, basically, we're just reaffirming we're doing what we're doing, because somebody misled us, I couldn't, I was fine, because otherwise I, I wanted blood like you.
I just want to make one other point, I physically went to visit David War, sat down with him and apologized for the.
Great.
Undue aggravation of someone trying to help the town.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I can, Attorney Bowen isn't here, but, you know, he and I were delegated by the board to work on this, to try to resolve it, and I can tell you that the, the first draft I saw of the proposed addendum, I guess, if you will, to the lease, I redlined the hell out of that thing, because, as I think you're a lawyer, said of me and Rich, you guys are adopting a militaristic approach, and we said, well, yes, we are. Some of the language in there said, you know, to avoid confusion, that, that was gone, there has never been any confusion about this, never in our minds, never in your minds, certainly not in the 2016 town meetings minds, where I think this thing passed unanimously, and if not, maybe there were one or two people who just yelled no for the hell of it, we yelled no.
Nope, unanimous. Unanimous lately.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just glad it's over with, I'm sorry you had to lose a month of good construction time, I really hope that's not the reason that it won't be completed in time for next summer, and we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Can I put, I have to end with the same plug I always end with, it's an expensive project, we are still aggressively fundraising, we have about $1.7 million left to raise for the entire Buzzards Bay Center idea, the boats, the staffing, the endowment, the, the bathhouse itself will get built, we are financed to get the building done, but the building is just one component of a larger program, so private fundraising continues, and I just want people to know that.
Maybe, maybe those that sued will step up and make amends through the contribution, so.
Thank you all, again, for all your support. Thank you.
Thanks, take care.
Bye-bye now.
Thank you.
I want to stop just for a second, I missed it a little bit earlier, I got sidetracked a little bit. We lost one of our presidents of the United States a few days ago, like a moment of silence for H.W. Bush, please. Pastor Shaw, would you like to come up, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pastor Shaw has been an extremely valuable piece of Wareham landscape for a reasonable period of time now, doing a lot of good things. We wanted to give you some recognition, we're really sorry to see you leave, we've had some interactions back and forth, I think Mary has as well, and I'm really sad to see you go.
You know, before you read that, if you don't mind, I, I had the pleasure to work many times with Pastor Shaw on different projects along the way for, for various homeless issues and so on, and I've been in, I've had some friends, it's not friends, but some people that I know that were in your, in your facility many times and so on, and, you And, you know, the grace and the job that you did over there was remarkable. And I don't know if the town can say enough of what you've done for the community as a whole. And we, I really greatly appreciate it on a personal level. I've seen you in action and I just wanted you to know that.
I appreciate your kind words. I was thinking this afternoon, a bit of the history of nights of hospitality. This will be our 11th winter to do it. And I, I remember having lunch with Dave Frederickson, the former rector at Good Shepherd, January of 2009, planning this thing on a napkin kind of an approach. And then Colin Wright, who was the pastor of the Emmanuel Assembly of God, and Bob Richardson, who was pastor at First Congregational Church for the four churches that began that, you know, it's, it's those kind of people that were willing to, to take that first giant step. And then so many people, not just from our churches, but from the community at large, have been volunteers over the years. I began to realize this afternoon, as I was thinking about that, that it's not one person that's provided leadership, but it's really the, the soul of a town that really is concerned about the last, the least and the lost. And so it's, it's, this town has shaped me as much as I may have helped shape the, the shelter, so it's been a privilege.
I'm going to read a little award, if everybody wants to get it. Come forward. I'll do my best. Most likely Wareham, certificate of recognition to Pastor David Deshaw in recognition of your commitment to the community as the lead pastor at the Emmanuel Church of Nazarene and a strong advocate of the homeless, helping develop the town's Knights of Hospitality program and also being involved with Father Bill's and Main Spring Homeless Advocacy Group. Your work with single mothers and other groups that work with addiction recovery is commendable. We, the Board of Selectmen salute the tireless work you have accomplished and wish you well in your new position at the New Beginnings Church of Nazarene in Loudon, New Hampshire. Signed by Alan Slaven Chair, Patrick Troppiano Clerk, Peter Titlebaum, Anthony Scasiato and Mary Bruce.
Thank you. You're welcome. I'm going to miss you guys too.
Number C.
CPC Town Administrator.
You want money?
It's just the, what do you call it? Meeting minutes. He has it. That must be out there.
Take one, pass it down. This is for the CPC.
No, this is a request from the Town Administrator.
Yeah, yeah. And this is, this is the proposal. Take one and pass it down. You can't have them all.
Sorry, yes.
So in the packet, you'll see, there's three separate documents, although they go a little bit longer. One is the field card for the property, which is located at 118 Sandwich Road. To give you some history about that, we've recently taken that through the tax title process and it is now town property. At one time, there was a home there and there was an unfortunate fire and some other things resulting from that, so it's really too bad. However, we think we have an opportunity to make, do something really nice here. So really, the plan is, and we'd like to work with the Division of Marine Fisheries, is to create a small parking area there and then a large, well, not large, but you'd have a, an outgoing dock plus the, if you will, the gangway to get out past the mud in the marsh and create a kayak, kayak launch, cartop launch area there. We, we think it'd be really great water access for our residents and visitors to, to do a launch. If you look on page one, it almost creates a triangle, if you will. So you found the eastern side of the, you have 118 Sandwich Road. On the westerns or northwestern, you have the Tremont Nail Kayak location. And then you have Bessie Park too, but I mean, it's, those run a little swift there, so.
You're making him laugh at the Wareham triangle thing.
Lost kayakers. But that's really, you know what, this would make, it's a nice stretch of water, really nice kayaking. You've got the swans that roll through. It's, it's really a great spot.
The great news is Tremont Nail's included.
Yeah, you know, you've, you've got it right in there.
Peter must have insisted.
But the way I look at it is that this could be, you could have people that, that go down there, park, go for kayaking, even tie up at Bessie Park. I'm sure depending on which way the waters run and that could be difficult, but, you know, even come down to, I don't know, Tremont Nail and, and enjoy what's, what's offered around there. So really, the thought is to create the, the dock and the decking for a kayak launch site. It's very preliminary, but I'd like to put it, put it out there. And again, we're going to ask for funds from the Division of Marine Fisheries as well, but we think we'd like to go forward. The current estimate is $75,000.
So this is something we're going to submit to CPC?
Yes, and if that's going to, if that is going to make it, I think what we should do is have a vote to turn this from tax title property and put it under the, under the Board of Selectmen for recreational purposes.
Okay, so you'd want to go to town meeting and get a two-thirds vote on that?
Yeah, yeah. It isn't the most necessary to do this, but I think it clears it up forever. So in the future, you don't, we don't build this dock and then somebody tries to sell it in the lean years or something like that, like I would, so. So of course, the person that, one of the department heads that always has free time, Mr. Buckminster's assisting me on this, so.
So you basically need a vote from us so you can apply for CPC?
Yes.
So I'm over.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, Epstein, four, Tony is?
What do you want to say?
Four, zero, zero.
And I think the committee already approved it, so I'm just going forward now.
I think they're giggling in the background.
Or they denied it.
And they're giggling about that. Are they here to speak to this?
No, we haven't. It was just, I haven't spoken to them whatsoever, so this is a, this is a new one and if you didn't have the appetite for it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't bring it forward.
Well, I bet you're really glad you came. Learned something new.
So, the spring town meeting articles, I guess we have two of them right now. Did you write that down?
Mary, you have anything that you want to bring forward? Anything whatsoever as far as spring town meetings? I want to, what the, what the goal is, is to try and get the things listed out now so come January, we can start working on them. So we don't do what we have a tendency to do, is try and do articles like a month before town meeting, which doesn't work. So that's why I put this on the agenda and mentioned it a month ago, so.
All right, yeah, no, we, well, we have some properties that we have to get cleared up with the Redevelopment Authority, but we'll work on that, just so we can start doing some things with them.
All right, so we expect to have some articles in January roughed out for the Redevelopment Authority?
Yeah, I would think so. We, we hope to have a rough draft of the redevelopment plan done about by the end of the year and then voted by the Redevelopment Authority to accept it and then come to the Board of Selectmen. And at that point, we would ask that the redevelopment plan be adopted because actually the Board of Selectmen has the authority to approve a redevelopment plan. If there's any zoning changes, of course, those have to go to town meeting. There may be some zoning changes associated with this. There may be some properties that, that we've held on to, you know, for too long, that the Selectmen could even transfer over on their own to the Redevelopment Authority. I'm thinking specifically of West Wareham School where the town meeting article that took it out of the control of the school committee, gave it to the Selectmen with the ability of the Selectmen to dispose of it on their own. So things like that wouldn't necessarily have to go to town meeting if the Selectmen already have the authority to, to shuttle them off. But as far as the redevelopment plan, that is something that the Board of Selectmen has to approve. And there may be some zoning changes sought at town meeting. So I'm just alerting this board that that's a possibility.
Patrick, you have anything?
No, not yet. I'm, I've, you know, it takes time to develop and, you know, I've been thinking about it, so. I have a few ideas. I'll let you know soon.
Well, I'm going to give, I'm going to give everybody.
They don't have anything to do with Tremont Nail.
No.
Everything.
Everything has to do with.
Mr. Chairman, one of the ones we'll need to put out there is rescind the borrowing article for the portables since those were, those weren't needed.
Is that going to come from the school department or from us?
I think we put forward the borrowing article originally for the, on behalf of the, for the school department, so we might as well just take it out the same way it came in.
Okay. We'll use the date of January 22nd for our meeting to flush out and get some solid information out to the public of what we're going to do as well. Tony, do you have any articles, any kind you want to bring forth at town meeting?
No.
I would actually ask at this point that we just keep this on as, as a continuing, continuing agenda item until we wind up closing the warrant.
There might be a few more CPC coming forward. We, we have been approached a few times for the Hammond School for the exterior, has it as a historic building and such, and potentially the East School as well.
That's for the annual, not the special town meeting, right?
It's not, I guess it's not on the agenda at this time, sorry.
Should've, should've told her earlier.
That was kind of mean.
Well, now, now we have leverage at least.
Yes, you have leverage.
We know you want something from us too.
A lot more then.
For me, basically, I want to make sure that we have several of the zoning articles that were not processed through for further study, signed bylaws, which Patrick had some input that he wanted to do as well as myself.
Yes. Have, have the boards had any meetings on those yet?
No, they have not. That's part of my problem. I talked to Mr. Buckland about that as well, that they need to actually start to schedule and do these things, not just.
Well, that's the problem we had last time when we brought it forward is it didn't ever got.
Yeah, one of them is over a year now, so it's not acceptable.
Well, there's a couple of things that were on the planning board's tape plate that never got accomplished that need to get accomplished.
Correct. Yeah, one, one of this is signed bylaw, then this, the section 530 defining, I guess more in detail what, what junk is on a property and abandoned vehicles and boats and things like that, that was further studied at the request of the planning board. So that's something we're going to have to keep an eye on and see if there's any progress on that as well. That's an important tool for the Director of Inspection Services to go out and clean up properties. It's one thing to go in there and tell a court, yeah, there's a bunch of junk on the property and the judge is going to say, well, what kind of junk? Well, but is that a violation? Is it this? Is it that? If you have actual limits on how many, you know, derelict boats and motor vehicles and so on and so forth, trailers that somebody can have on a property, it's easy to go in and say, your honor, they're violating this section of the zoning bylaw by having this, this and this there. And that makes the Director of Inspection Services' job a hell of a lot easier before the judge.
And you're already allowed only one unregistered vehicle, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So the gentleman that was concerned about it, who had four unregistered vehicles, he's already breaking the law.
He's already breaking the law. Did, did the carriage bylaw make it through?
I believe it has on there, yeah.
Okay, so.
We need to start.
So somebody needs to let Gary know he had some question about it and Bobby Ethier, I believe, had some questions too.
Yeah, actually, what we need to do in regards to that is send out mailings and start having meetings with those that are impacted by it.
Okay. I just didn't know whether it was because there was some question about it, so.
I'm not sure if we'll make the spring town meeting up, but we need to start to put it on our plate, the public safety complex. We have the police talking about what they need for staffing. Well, what's as important, if not more, and if nobody has had the opportunity, they should go to our police department, see if you can get a tour, looking at the cells, where the police have to process people, where they have to have their meetings, et cetera. It is one of the most unsafe facilities I've ever seen. They take their life in their hands, basically, with what happens inside that building a lot of times. It's just not safe for prisoners, not safe for the public and it's not safe for the police the way it is right now. It outlived its usefulness probably in the first 10 years when it was built, I believe in 1971. And it's just not something that we can do. We, back with the Capitol Planning Committee, I believe in 2008, had listed three major projects for the town that had to get done. We didn't have the money for them, so we put them in as, as wishes, but they were critical. The first one was the mine at school, the second one was the Deacon School, and the third one was the police station slash public safety. And I believe it's the, it's now the time for the police department to get what they need there. We've taken care of the first two, it's time for the third one. There may be some more information coming down on public transportation. I have to wait to see what happens in the spring. So there may be a push again to try and develop the backside of Merchant's Way. We have a plan that we basically paid a study for and it would be a major economic room to downtown Wareham to have that waterfront developed with a train stop as well. I've got a couple other things, but I don't want to put them out until I have some better feel for it. That's all I have today.
Well, the, the police station, you know, we had a police, a committee 20 years ago to look at that and Claire Smith was the chairman. And I got in big trouble with her because I, I remember getting her, talking her into getting on that committee. And then I said, she says, yeah, but you know what, they'll do, we'll do whatever and then they'll just get rid of it.
That's exactly what they did.
And that's exactly, and you know, Mr., a certain gentleman that we all know, sunsetted it immediately after becoming chairman of this board, had it sunsetted.
They took the report.
Which was the year after I left. He sunsetted, sunsetted it immediately. And it's too bad because we didn't, we knew that we couldn't build a station at the time. We, we knew there was issues, but we, the intent was to try to keep it going so that we were on the front line and ready when the time came that we might be able to do something. And it's really a shame that we missed out on that because there was so much good stuff going on, so much good information, that now you, you know, 20 years later, you know, you have to do all over again. It could have just been in place and it's really too bad.
Okay, let's move on to the surplus equipment. I believe we got in the folder there, there's.
I do.
Pictures, et cetera.
I have a folder with pictures and goodies like always.
You should have a list of there as well.
This goes to auction, right?
Yeah, we can, we can surplus it via auction, whether we're going to do the online or what have you.
They have that municipal, municipal bid or something like that?
Muni bid.
Yeah, and I know that they, they get a lot of money for stuff, so maybe we'll make a couple of dollars in the process, so.
Motion to go ahead.
I move that we approve the disposition of the, the surplus property.
Second. Does anybody want to see it?
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Anybody want to, before we vote, take a look through?
No, we got the list.
Just want to make sure.
It's all junk trucks and plows and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and just so people understand, as part of the process, we had to hire an independent person to come in that's, that's state certified to give a value for each one. And then they actually put their seal on the, the photo of them, if you will, because otherwise all us dirty crooks will be told we're stealing money, so. That's why you do it properly.
This is not like the old days where people used to call surplus when it wasn't surplus and it was their friends and relatives bought all kinds of stuff. That does not happen anymore.
So.
Okay, no other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, Epstein, five, zero, zero.
All right, the next is a piece of 61A land up on Glen Charlie Road. They want to put a communications tower on, which I believe, and maybe I'm being a little, first off, we, we don't want to buy the land, so we'll, we'll let that go.
What we did, what we normally do is on this, we vote to basically.
Not, not take our rights, yes.
But what has to happen is it has to go to the planning board, any other boards. They have 30 days to come back with an answer on that.
Correct.
I think we have as many as 120 days to make a decision on this as well.
So basically, they want to take it out of 61A, okay?
Have the notifications gone out and has the, the time expired?
In order to take it out of 61A, we have the right of first refusal as well as it has to go to the planning board and all those guys. And somebody can say, yeah, and oh geez, we need to, we should buy this or whatever. And then, of course, we would, but in this case, definitely will.
But we still have to go through the process.
Mr. Chairman, I have a little bit of an issue with this one in that it's a large parcel, 61A parcel. They're taking a small section, a small piece out of it to build the tower. the tower. We need, I don't want to hurt anybody, if you will, but we need communications towers to have the ability to be on there for our public safety. My issue is, we have another one where we used to have the tower, and suddenly they want $3,000 a month from us. To get that out of there for the 61A, I don't see why we wouldn't buy it, unless they want to give us the use of that tower in perpetuity for public safety.
Negotiate it.
Why don't we basically, again, put it out to the boards, come back, and then you basically make your statement. We vote on what we want to do.
Okay.
Why don't we authorize him to negotiate that?
Well, let's get the answer from the boards as well.
The piece that they're, excuse me, the piece that they want to use, and I don't see a map in here, the piece that they want to use...
2,500 square feet.
Okay, but there's more to it than that, because the tower, depending on how big the tower is, has got to fall on the property if it ever fell over. You can't, in other words, all the property around, for the circle around it, is sort of zone, is sort of the safety zone. And if the tower fell, it has to fall on the property for the, for the tower.
Yeah, because this one's basically right across the street from the Fire District Water Tower over there, so. And again, it's, I mean, it's a 2,500 square foot section being taken out of a couple acres of chapter land, so.
I'd like a motion to consider removing from 61A based on what the town administrator and the boards that are required to...
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Any questions? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five, zero, zero.
All right, next up is the ABC certificate renewal.
Yep, that's just a standard requirement.
Yep, do it every year. Renewal certificate. And the one that we're signing says none, so there's no changes, basically. And I move, we approve it.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five, zero, zero.
Okay, temporary increase residence population, ABC requirements.
Yep, another standard.
That's another one of those things that we do. And it says, temporary, the estimated population of 44,000. That's July 10, 2019. I move, we approve the increase in population.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions to the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, four, zero, zero.
So the next one is vote on ambulance rates. But we don't have them, so you're gonna bring them next time?
You mean, you wouldn't just blanket vote on that?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, I would, I would request, I can send them out. I apologize that they weren't here tonight.
We'll reschedule it for next week.
Yes, please.
Any other business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just sort of get back to the TA report, if you don't mind, for two seconds, unless, actually, that's after the 40s. I apologize.
So, yeah, we're gonna get to you.
All right. Guess I'm anxious.
I guess so. What, you got a date?
Anybody got 48 hour business?
I still have to hit the grocery store before I go home.
We can send you over to the marijuana place and munchies.
All right, town administrators, report then.
Thank you.
Report.
I do want to take a moment and thank Kathy Murphy for serving as the interim library director in between our search to replace Mr. Carla Lozzi. And it's, we have hired George Ripley, and as the library director, the announcement was sort of pre-made out of joy, but that's okay. We're very happy to have him. He had his welcome to Wareham moment yesterday. Upon entering the building, they had discovered that in the records room, a pipe had burst over it, and some of our historic records were waterlogged. Just to let you know, what we're doing is we've put in a claim with Maya. We've already, he acted wonderfully, if you will, brilliantly on it. Engaged with the MBLC for speaking to the, with them on some of the historic documents. We're working with archivist. Already, some have been moved up to North Hampton to be, to start being worked on. And if our insurance does not cover all of it, we are allowed to dip into a pool of funds by the MBLC. So I guess it's good to be certified again for such things. So it's, there was, there was some good, good water damage to some of the records, and it's really a shame. So we're gonna try and get them, get them stabilized and worked on.
This is where the Historical Commission was storing this?
Yes, in that, in that room with the climate controlled room, not the stone room, but the climate controlled room.
Make it clear that's not the stone room.
Yeah. But I do want to thank, you know, we thank, to thank Mr. Ripley, come on board. I'd like to introduce him to the board. And I realize there's something that we've been doing that actually it's, the board could take umbrage, so I apologize. You're supposed to receive a letter and vote upon the hiring if, or not within 14 days. So I'd love to claim I sent, love to claim I officially sent it. It was in the paper, so I apologize for that.
I guess we should read the paper more often to find out what you're doing.
Yes. So, so it's, I was pretty impressed with him on the, on the first few days trial by water, not fire in this case, so.
He's come from an interesting, interesting town, ABC City as well.
Correct.
He's probably seen everything.
He has now.
And more is to come. You're all set, Eric?
Yes, thank you.
Tony, any reports from committees or anything?
No.
Mary?
No, sir.
Peter?
No.
Patrick?
I did want to say one thing. I kind of held off earlier, but I just did want to thank the board and appreciate what the action that they've taken for the, against the 40B project and trying to deal with that issue. This board showed solidarity and making, in my opinion, a very good decision. And it's great for the town, and it's great for everybody, and it's amazing how the process works, and it really does work. And everybody should appreciate it. We, you know, people don't realize how hard we actually work up here, you know, until you get some of these things, and you're kind of working them out and making it all happen and so on. And finally, it happened, and I know Peter was upset when I, when I kind of called this all out on it. And I meant us as a whole, not as any individuals. It wasn't meant to make anybody feel individually, you know, attacked in one way or another. I hope the board understands that, that I just thought it was a very valuable thing that needed to be done. And it's not because I got my way, as far as it's concerned. It's because I think the board took the time to think about it again and come up with a good decision, and that was important to me, and I appreciate it.
I was happy to support.
I just want everybody to know that.
Just so the public understands, when this was discussed, we talked about trying to go maybe as an unfunded mandate. I had already done that with Secretary Bump a little while before, which nobody really knew, and was politely explained why it wasn't gonna happen. Good luck, but don't bother. When Patrick basically was insistent upon it, I felt very simple. I didn't want the town to waste time with a frivolous suit that we couldn't win at all. So I basically asked Patrick and our town council to sit down and come up with a game plan that was viable, and which is what they did. We're going at it from a different direction than normal, and there is a chance it can be done. It falls under our town council's basic monthly bill. It doesn't require any extra expenses, which some people claim it does. Obviously, we didn't give, I think we didn't read off the richest bill a week or two ago, which Patrick got slammed for, which was unnecessary, because the bill's the same every month.
Same as it is.
But that's okay. Yes.
Yeah.
And just...
What are you hiding? The one month you didn't read it off, opposed to the 11 you did.
Yeah.
So just to let the public know, it's the same, and we'll be reading off for next week his bill, and we'll reiterate the same numbers the month before.
You'll pull up flashcards?
Yeah, but I just want the people to understand that we don't sit there and waste the taxpayers' money just suing someone just for the hell of it. We did this for a real good reason, and we did it with a game plan that made sense, that has a possibility of working. If it had no possibility, I would never authorize it as the chair. Thank you for pushing this on it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's great.
You know what? The one thing we didn't sort of address, we all know about, and I'm pretty sure the public does, but we didn't have a meeting, was the, the tax rate was set.
Yes, I thought you were gonna say that.
Yeah, so the, you know, this year it was set at $10.94 per thousand versus the previous year, which was $11.28 per thousand. So what folks need to know is, a lot of time it can get confusing. Our levy base, which is, you know, the whole, if you will, of the, not necessarily the values of the property, but what we can get out of taxes for the values of those properties. When the properties do rise in value, your tax rates go down.
So that you stay within the two and a half.
So you stay within proposition two and a half. When we do the measuring list or the revaluations, everybody thinks suddenly we've generated a bunch more money. That is absolutely false. So if somebody's, when you go out and do the revals, if somebody's house has come in higher, because that's what the market says, others are going to have to go down to offset that, because it cannot, you cannot artificially increase the levy base.
Right.
So it's, so everybody that thought suddenly we got millions extra dollar, that's another one that we need to unfortunately let people know. Did not happen. Would love that if it had, but it had not. And actually, I want to take a moment. Jackie Nichols, who's our director of assessing, who's obviously going through some things, and happens to be tough as nails.
She does.
You know, she came through and working on this and really helped make this happen. And it's, I'm just, I don't know how else, but I'm proud, I'm thrilled, I'm amazed. And, you know, from her work, and then we have Mr. Foster takes it over the guideline, you know, we're blessed to have who we have working for us, so.
You know, that's the reason why she's gonna be okay, is because she has tenacity like no one else. And that's terrific.
One other thing, I've had some meetings, but they're really not necessary to discuss. I did go to the school committee preliminary budget meeting. It wasn't the hearing last Thursday. The actual hearing is this coming Thursday. I did express my concerns about the increase. I expressed was really concerned about the increase in salaries. And really, again, I have no problem with the teachers, per se, but the bottom line is they're not negotiating at the same pot as all the other departments in town. And at the end of the day, everybody is part of this town. Every department is all part of the whole. And we have to sit there and work as a group. We can't work individually. And when you have a 7% increase in requests, and you have really, when you figure out the steps, plus the contracted increases, and with the step adjustments, it's a lot closer to the 5% increase. And our employees here in Wareham and the other departments are working on about a 1% increase a year, and it just doesn't send a message that's palpable at all to anyone. And I made that point because I really was concerned about it. And at the end of the day, my question simply to the school department is, if you want $2.1 million, what department are you gonna take it from? And I'd like to see that answer. I will not be at the meeting this Thursday because of my commitment to Plymouth County Advisory Council that I probably gonna have to chair. But I've made a statement, which will be read by either Peter or Patrick, on my feelings about all of this. Thank you.
All right, consent agenda. Next, I move, we approve the minutes of June 26, 2018, the regular board selectmen's session, and everyone was here.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstain, five, zero, zero.
Next is, I move, we approve the November 20, 2018 executive session minutes for, and hold, please, and everybody was here. Tony came in a little late, but he was here.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying five, zero, zero.
If you can sign that for me, Captain. Okay, that leaves move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain. For the record, Tony was in at...
Night Wareham.
7:36, Tony arrived. Just for the record, it's for Janet. Thank you. Good night, Wareham.